Thank you, Dr. Sharon. May I have motion to accept the agenda with the addition of the finance and payroll system added to four point three?
Madam Chair, to accept the agenda with the addition for four point three?
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Ms. Porter?
Yes, sir.
Somebody has an open something going.
Sounds like a radio.
Radio, right.
Yeah, dude.
Somebody need to mute something in the back.
In the background.
Yes.
That's better.
There it is.
There it is, okay. At this time, we have our high scale elementary update from Dr. Wright.
Madam Chair, members of the board and all that are listening, the Haskay Elementary School project is still going along well. There is more of the auditorium being built. Of course, we have had a substantial amount of rain, which has hampered the project somewhat at this point. I just asked on Friday. The project is still on time and everything should be good to go. But very soon, you will see some additional, the finished roof, if you will, on that portion as well as the masonry continuing to go up around the building. But like I said, the project is moving full steam ahead and everything is on schedule. We also are in the final stages of selecting a furniture vendor to, where we'll have some tours coming up in the next few weeks to finalize that. Keeping in mind that we want all of our classroom furniture to be what I'm calling interactive furniture that allows for, once we're past COVID, that allows for pairing and group instruction as well as individualized instruction. And so I think we've got a tour coming up first day of March, we're going to one vendor and just kind of looking around to make sure that we make the best cost. But we're excited, exciting times in, I mean, the construction of a high scale elementary school for sure.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Okay. We'll move on to our bulletin board description for Mrs. Parker.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Wright. The bulletin board displays for the month of February was done by C.S. Brown High School STEM, Mr. Bobby Jones Principal. The boards were created by Mrs. Linda Walden and Mrs. Connie Harold. They are teacher assistants, and Mrs. Paula Burden, who is the lead secretary slash data manager slash bookkeeper. Both boards were geared toward Black History and Valentine. February is considered a month of love, seeing as we recently just celebrated Valentine's Day. February is known also as Black History Month, Heart Month, and Random Acts of Kindness Month. And the fact that Black History is part of American history, it is very important for all Americans to know, learn about, and understand Black History. In a country like America, we are a melting pot containing different cultures, and we should appreciate every single one of them because they all helped shape America into what it is today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Parker. And we can see the displays in the background of various artwork. It looks very nice.
Yes, ma'am. I have a presentation about that, Madam Chair, that I was going to give during my superintendent comments, but whatever the board's pleasure is on that, I can, I can do it now or wait until those comments.
Well, you can wait. It'll be fine with us. Okay, we'll move on to our report from Mrs. Chair.
Good afternoon, members of the board. We have before you, we have before you our recommendations. Four point one, retirement resignations and transfers. That information, that's for your information, you have that before you. Also for four point two, we have certified classified recommendations recommending for certified personnel Adrian Brown as CTE teacher ag at the high school, Kiana Harris as EC general curriculum teacher at Hurford County Middle, have Kiana Holloman as ELA teacher at Hurford County Middle, Shannon Ruffin as EC general curriculum at Hurford County High School, Nicholas Tenet as social studies teacher at Hurford County High School, Sherri Williams as art teacher at Hurford County Middle School. And those are the certified recommendations for classified personnel. We have Lorenzo Benthal as the mechanic at the transportation department and Ashley Collins as teacher assistant at Early College High School.
Thank you. At this time, I would like a recommendation or motion to approve the certified recommendations by the administrations. Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, Mr. E. Hall?
Yes.
Um, yes, ma'am. I would like to be recused from the employee recommendations due to a conflict of interest.
Thank you so much for letting us know. Okay, we'll proceed on with our motion. And Mr. Eddie Hall has been recused.
Ms. Porter?
Yeah.
I would like the motion that we accept the certified and classified recommendations coming from the administration at this time.
May I have a second?
Second, that motion, Dr. Sharon.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion has been carried. Thank you. Mrs. Sharon.
Okay, for four point three, I didn't have any additional employment, but we would like to recommend to the board that for the purchase of Tyler Technologies, which is an updated HR finance and payroll system.
May I have a motion to approve the system change for finance and payroll with Tyler Technology System at this time?
Madam Chair, I'm in order with the motion that we are from the recommendations concerning the update Tyler System.
May I have a second, please?
Madam Chair, Dr. Sharon, a second, that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion has carried. Thank you. Is there anything else, Mrs. Sharon, at this time?
At this time, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Somebody keep coming up really often.
At this time, we'll move on with our court list statements from Mrs. Martin.
Good afternoon, Chair Porter, members of the board, Dr. Wright. You have before you the financial statements for the six months ended December thirty-one, twenty twenty for, for your review.
Are there any questions or comments? Okay. We may move on, Ms. Martin.
You also have before you the audit contract for the year ended, is the audit contract for this fiscal year, is with Thompson Price, Scott Adams and Company. The contract amount is twenty-one thousand and increase of three point seven percent or seven hundred and fifty dollars. And that is for your approval.
May I have a motion to approve the TPSA to audit the financial statements of Hurford County Schools based on their timeliness and completing audits and their, in a professional manner? May I have a motion at this time?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept the recommendation from administration for the Thomas Price Scott Adams and Company for our audit.
May I have a second?
Second, the motion, Dennis Deloitte.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion has been carried to approve TPSA to audit the financial statements of Hurford County Schools. At this time, thank you, Ms. Martin. At this time, we'll move on to our policy revisions, the second reading by Dr. Wright.
Madam Chair, members of the board, you have before you board policy revisions, second reading. There were several board policies, about five or six of them that were approved on first reading last year. This will be the remaining set that is recommended for approval at this time. These changes were recommended by the NCSBA, North Carolina School Board Association, and also have been reviewed by various members of administration, and they have sat on the docket for thirty days.
Thank you. May I, are there any questions or concerns concerning the policy review? May I have a motion to accept the policy, board policy revisions at this time?
Madam Chair, Dr. Sharon, I move that.
That there are a number of those, but those revisions that have been listed by administration. A motion, please.
Dr. Sharon, I make a motion that we accept section five point three, the board policy revision, second reading.
Madam Chair, Wendell Hall, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion has been carried to accept the revisions given to us by the administration. At this time, we will have our superintendent's report.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I would like to start off today by highlighting the artwork that you see behind me. There are several outstanding works of art behind me today. You can probably see them fairly well. They were all done by a gentleman by the name of Dr. John T. Biggers, who was a renowned and internationally known painter, sculptor, muralist, illustrator, and educator. He is considered as one of the major figures in American art in the twentieth century. A native son of Gastonia, North Carolina, he studied at Hampton University, Penn State University, and served as founder and chairman of Texas State, now Texas Southern University's Art Department. His contribution in the area of murals has been extraordinary. He paved the way and inspired African-American artists such as Paul Goodnight, Ernie Barnes, Jacob Lawrence, and countless others. He believed that self-dignity and racial pride could be consciously approached through art, especially his own social realist murals and late-career symbolic paintings. John Biggers came to prominence after the Harlem Renaissance and towards the end of World War Two. In the nineteen fifty's, Biggers traveled in Africa sponsored by a UNESCO fellowship to study West African cultural traditions. In nineteen fifty-seven and thereafter, African themes were at the center of Biggers' work. Nineteen sixty-two, Biggers published book entitled Anons, The Web of Life in Africa, featured eighty-nine drawings and texts that he hoped would portray what was intrinsically African. In nineteen ninety-five, he was the subject of a major one-man traveling exhibition entitled The Art of John Biggers: View from the Upper Room, curated by the Museum of Fine Arts in Houston, a museum that in nineteen fifty had not allowed Biggers to attend a reception in honor of his prize-winning entry at the then segregated institution. In nineteen eighty-three, he was recognized as the Texas Artist of the Year. John Biggers died in two thousand and one, but his rich history and legacy lives on via a multitude of collections, exhibits, and murals at several public locations in Houston as well as Hampton University, Winston-Salem State University, and the Delta Sigma Theta Arts Center in Winston-Salem and Fayetteville State University's Museum of Art. Biggers' work continues to be represented in the collections of celebrity collectors, the New York Metropolitan Museum of Art, the Smithsonian American Art Museum, the Smithsonian American, African American Museum, Brooklyn Museum, the Mint Museum of Art in Charlotte, North Carolina, Museum of Art in Raleigh, Gibbs Museum of Art, and many other museums and collectors. And fortunately, he is the descendant, a relative of our social, our student services director, Ms. Biggers, Ms. D. Biggers, and so we are blessed to have a portion of his collection here in our district to observe Black History Month. So we're certainly honored to be able to host that. And ladies and gentlemen of the board and members, it is indeed a breathtaking collection.
It appears to be, Dr. Wright.
Yes, ma'am. Also, got, got a few more items here. First of all, my administrative assistant, Mrs. Whitney Hall and her husband, we call him Ken, but Kendrick Hall, they have a new baby boy. He was born on Tuesday, February sixteenth. He five pounds nine ounces, Kendrick Hall Junior is his name, and mom and baby are both doing well and, and getting to know each other on a more personal level. Hurford County High School Black History Month Bulletin Board and Door Contest was held last week. All departments collaborated together to create bulletin boards and doors honoring and celebrating Black History. Thank you to our judges. I was fortunate enough to be one of them. Reverend Shern, Mr. Eddie Hall were also judges, Ms. Michelle Smith, and Ms. Natasha Norman all participated in judging. Class of twenty twenty-one Picture Day was February eighth. Thanks go out to Life Touch for creating a safe and enjoyable experience for the class of twenty twenty-one. Black History Month Spirit Week was held February fifteenth through nineteenth, so last week, the theme was Black Excellence, and there was a week of celebration, reflection, virtual events, and discussions held and hosted by the inaugural Hurford County High School Black History Month Committee. There is a virtual event going on today, February twenty-second. It is called African-American Read-In, Real Men Read. It's a virtual event going on in the media center at Hurford County High School, and it is featuring Dr. Leach, the principal, Mr. Hines, assistant principal, and Mr. Travis Gatling, the band director. Teacher and instructional assistant spotlights, the march recipients for that are Ms. Sarah Davis and Ms. Sylvia Anthony. They're being recognized for their hard work and dedication to going above and beyond for students and staff. The ASVAB test will be administered at Hurford County High on February nineteenth. That, that was actually last week, last Friday. The ACT will be administered tomorrow, February twenty-third, to Hurford County High juniors. Hurford County High Basketball had their senior night on February sixteenth. Thank you to all the graduating seniors for your dedication to the Hurford County High School Athletic Program. And although this was not on my list, we are not finished yet. First round is Tuesday night, so we're gonna get this state championship finally this year. Our boys finished the regular season undefeated, ten and oh overall, and they had an eight and oh conference record and therefore were the Northeastern Coastal Conference Champions. A one thousand career points basketball was awarded to Dalen Askew on February sixteen. Congratulations to Dalen Askew, who reached one thousand career points and the milestone in his basketball career. He was awarded the one thousand career point basketball from Hurford County High School. At Early College High School, in honor of Black History Month, we have been publishing weekly videos showcasing our students and honoring those of the past and the present. February sixteenth, Early College High School hosted pre-ACT testing for all tenth graders, and we had a hundred percent participation. February nineteenth, Early College High School had incoming virtual freshman interviews. And February twenty-third, they will also have the ACT for eleventh grade students. At C.S. Brown High School STEM, January twenty-eighth, they had a social emotional learning screener. February first, pre-ACT sophomore training for administration and teachers. February second, family communication updates, students, parents, faculty and staff. February third, CTE's vision meeting. February fifth, they had Life Touch senior portraits. February eighth, ACT training. February tenth, they had a virtual career fair planning session, which was done virtually, of course. February twelfth, MCL evaluation training. And February sixteenth, they had ACT training and for room supervisors statewide, ALP and PLC. And then last but not least on my list, Bearfield Primary School, we are all sending our prayers and thoughts out to Mrs. Cynthia Riddick, assistant principal during her time of illness. That's all I have at this time, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. We will let this time have our state board highlights from Mr. Wendell Hall.
Thank you, Madam Chair and boards, and I will be brief this, this afternoon. The big thing that went over the state board this month was the approval of the standards for the new social studies curriculum. It's been on the agenda for the last year and a half, been revised four times. You probably heard about it, you read about it, I don't know if you were in North Carolina or on national news, know about it, but there was a lot of discussion over, over six words that some people decided wanted not to be included in the standards. Now remember, we're talking about standards, not curriculum, two different things. And the six words happened to be systemic discrimination, gender identity, and discrimination as a whole, systemic discrimination. But anyway, those six words caused a lot of problems with the discussion. It was finally passed by seven to five votes that those words would not be included per se, but would be a part of the state social studies curriculum, beginning in twenty-one, twenty-two, when that curriculum comes out. The board believes that certain groups in this nation, in this state, need to be recognized and need to be taught, that our students need to know about the past in order to enter into the future. The final standards will not include systemic discrimination, will not in school, will not include gender identity, but will have words like racism, which systemic offered of it, words like gender with identity gender taken off, in order to give our teachers the ability to drill down deeper without using systemic racism, systemic discrimination, and/or gender identity. Don't know how you felt about it or feel about it, but the board did uphold its pace and voted seven five to move forward. There will be a preamble to the standards this time. Now remember, the board only deals with standards, not with curriculum. Curriculum is how the standards are taught, and that's up to the, the state board and others to, to design that part of the curriculum. State budget, our budget was presented to the General Assembly this time. We're waiting now, SEL, it's a big thing now, socially most of learning, it's finally seen the light as to the needs for it, especially as we come back to school under the COVID-nineteen pandemic, not only for students, but for educators. We fully realize that there are a lot of educators that are coming back. They haven't been in the classroom in twelve months, with twenty-five, or thirty, or ten, or fifteen students. So we are looking at providing some services, services to them. We did have five new applications for charter schools that was approved by the state board also. CTE curriculum was revised and approved along with certification, I don't know business are margins there or not, but certification for finance officers has been updated to reflect the current situation of our finance people across the state. There are other things that the state board took care of, but that curriculum was, was the big issue this time. With that being said, thank you, Madam Chair. We meet again the first Wednesday and Thursday next month, and of course, we meet in, in a special call meeting Wednesday to discuss some issues also. Our state superintendent is committed to providing equity to all students across this state, all one point six million K-12 students. As you well know now, there's an office of equity that's in her department by the deputy superintendent, former superintendent in Pashtun County, Dr. Wright.
Dr. Catherine Edmonds.
Dr. Edmonds is the head of that particular department now as we move forward. The one thing that the state board's looking at and everyone else is providing opportunities for all of our students, and thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hall, for your report. I know you could hear media outlets concerning the issue and vocabulary used quite a bit, so thank you for clarifying exactly what was going on. We really appreciate it.
National media took it up because it's, they don't want the word racism, systemic racism, discrimination, or identity, gender identity discussed at all, but people, it's like, it's what it is, it's what it is.
But thanks for, thanks for bringing clarity upon what actually was going on there.
Whatever you call it, if you see some of emails, you're, I need a medal.
You did. Thank, thank you. Now, other board comments, Mr. Hall, while we have you there, do you have any more comments?
No, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair, not longer than that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Eddie Hall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My comments are real brief. I noticed a lot of things are going on in our district, and I just want to simply say to all of our staff members, thank you for the hard work and dedication that you all continue to do to ensure that we are still able to provide a quality education to our students in the midst of this pandemic. Certainly, well wishes to Ms. Hall and her family for the birth of her baby, their baby. And also, our prayers definitely go out to Ms. Riddick and her family in her time of illness. And best wishes to our men's basketball team as they contest tomorrow night in the first round of playoffs. And also, thank you to Dr. Leach and his staff for inviting me out to be a judge for the Black History Door and Bulletin Board Contest. There were some pretty creative and great things going on with that. And I just want to simply say to everyone, thank you, stay safe, continue to stay safe, and thank you for trusting us as we continue to navigate through this pandemic the best way we know how as a team and as a unit. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Sharon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. I will just piggyback off of Mr. Hall's comments as well. First of all, let me just commend Dr. Wright, Ms. Ward, and all of the principals and everyone who worked so hard to help us provide access to our children to get back into school in-person learning. I know it's a lot of work, and I think they ought to be commended. After seeing what they have presented to us today, I feel a lot better as we continue to communicate that information to the parents and students. I'm hoping that we'll have a very successful year coming forward. I did have an opportunity to go out to the high school and ask to be a judge for the Black History thing that they did out there, and that was great. I want to thank Dr. Leach and his people for inviting me to sharing that. I never particularly liked being judges because I want to give everybody a four, but I just couldn't do that. But it was great, and I really do appreciate it. Ms. Riddick, we pray for you during your illness. And also, I understand that we do have other members of our staff and so forth that are suffering sick from some from COVID and other things. So, we want to just continue to lift them up in our prayers, all of our families that are going through right now this pandemic. But anyway, I just thank everyone for everything they're doing. Thank this board for working together. We work hard at what we do, and I really do appreciate every one of you. I thank you for being our leader, Madam Chair. And again, everybody be safe and stay healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sharon. Mr. Deluge.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. I certainly share the same sentiments that other board members have shared. But I do want to say that as we look forward to bringing our students back for face-to-face instruction, I feel good about what has been done already to make our schools safe for our students and staff. I certainly want to thank our administrators and teams for all the hard work that they have done and showed us today to get our schools ready. We know that many situations have been addressed, but there will be situations that we don't know that will arise, and we'll deal with those as we get those. We are committed to making sure that our children are safe. So, I want children and staff are safe. So, I want to make sure that everybody knows that we're doing everything possible, everything possible to make sure that everything is safe for everybody who comes to school. Thank you so much. We appreciate all they do, and we encourage everybody to be safe. And not only be safe, but be safe for everybody else as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deluge. I would like to congratulate Mr. and Mrs. Hall on their bundle of joy. There's always a bright spot when you think of a baby. It brings much joy to not only her and her family, but to everybody involved that is connected with her. So, also, I would like to send out my prayers and thoughts to Mrs. Cynthia Riddick at this time. I hope that she will be doing well. I wanted to comment on the Black History Show that I observed on Zoom last week from the high school. It was super, it was great. And observing lessons from over the years, the high school, the teachers, the students, staff, Dr. Leach, everyone should be commended. It was really, it was enjoyable, it was informative, it was an integration of social studies, history, music, art, drama, and then question and answer from the students. I really enjoyed it. I want you, Dr. Leach, to let your staff know that it was well put together, well prepared, and one of the best black history lessons integrated with arts, music, everything than I have ever seen. So, it was very well organized. And with that, it shows so much talent at the high school, talent with faculty, staff, all of those that participated. We in Hurford County really have talented people in our school system, and we need to chewed our horns about that more than we do, I guess. So, I would like to thank you for the invitation, and it was a well-planned, well-integrated, and organized lesson in our black history. To our administrators that presented to us this morning, and to all of the people that were involved, Dr. Wright, for asking them to do so. All of the information that you have given us from your schools on the reopening for our students, it was excellent. Dr. Wright, we'll be getting out to our communities to let our parents and students know so they will be clear on how things will be done in entering the building while they're in the building and for the parents and students. Looking at what we observed this morning from our well-organized plans from the administrators and whoever worked on their committees from Hurford County Public Schools our community, I don't think you will have many questions to ask after viewing those videos. And Dr. Wright, we'll get out to you where and how you will be able to observe. But to all of our staff, administrators, teachers, whoever served on those committees, and certainly, Dr. Wright and your central office, we say great job and very informative. I think parents and students will be more relaxed and will understand more of how the going back will occur. They will be less stressed, and so many questions I'm sure that they are asking in their minds will certainly be answered by the well-prepared videos of our administrators that were shared here today. Would also like to thank all of our departments. Don't want to miss any, and we want everyone to know that we take this seriously. We've done our best as a board and cooperating with the health department, Dr. Wright and his staff, teachers, everybody, because we want you to be as safe as possible. Students, everybody involved in every department of Hurford County Schools, we want you to be as safe as you possibly can going back with this. And there's so many positive attitude from our staff and faculty and those involved. And while we are positive this way, surely, there may be, you know, a few things that come up, but when you're this positive, we can solve that too, as we have in the past, and we will move on. So, I commend you for your organization, your positive attitude, and all of the hard work that you have done this year. So, good luck to you in reopening, and we, the board, will support you one hundred percent. Thank you for all that you do. Also, congratulations to our basketball team. We hope you the best in your playoffs. So, thank you, we support you also. Great job done. Our next board meeting will be held, and it will be held in person, face-to-face, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. So, Dr. Wright will be letting you know and us know at a later date where we will choose this meeting, be it in a classroom or the boardroom, but it will be face-to-face. Administrators may be remote, but we will let, Dr. Wright will let you know the information at the time. Like to commend Dr. Wright and his staff for the many media outlets. We are trying to get all information out, being transparent to parents, community, and our students on as many outlets as we have. And Dr. Wright, I would like to commend you and everyone else for using those outlets to bring clarity to our community. Thank you so much. Are there any questions or concerns? May I have a?
Ms. Porter, did you mention the time of that next meeting?
It will be at ten a.m.
Thank you.
March twenty-second. Thank you for reminding me. May I have a motion at this time to adjourn the meeting?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
May I have a second?
Chair James Sharon, second.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much for your information.